Yes, Mr. Hidalgo Lynn Fontaine, our consultant is handing out some reports and he will come up and review them. If we don't have one for everybody, I can get copies to them later, but we may have enough.
All right, so if we could just get started with turning to the first page is summary overview of the performance of the group health plan. We are comparing a period of January through September to prior years, so this first page will just give you all of the global claims information and funding information. And second page breaks it down to a per employee per month, so that we can compare apples to apples. I will give you one piece of information to let you know, when you're talking about a period of January through September, school systems always have higher claims in the summer, obviously. That's when you're going to have a lot of elective procedures and things like that. I'm going to share some other figures with you because you always see your claims activity actually become more favorable in the fourth quarter on a school system account. And when I looked at the October, we actually got the October last claim run today, so I'll share some figures with you on that. But through the first nine months of the 2016 plan year, you're seeing that our medical claims here at $22,47,012,278 of prescription drugs for a total paid claims figure of $34,325,891. Plan reimbursements, which come in the form of reinsurance reimbursements, you're familiar with the fact that the plan is covered by reinsurance in the event of a large claim that goes over half a million dollars, that's re-insured. So we have reimbursements from that and the rest of the reimbursements are identified, prescription rebate, subrogation, that type of thing are reimbursements back to the plan of $1,004,010,000. Retiree drug subsidies, $897,936. So we have a net claims paid figure of $32,017,000. Our fixed costs, which consist of administration that we paid to Blue Cross and also our reinsurance premiums. Then you see your retiree premium from Humana. So we have a total planned cost through those nine months of basically right at $35 million. If you annualize that figure, it would be $46,697,000, but annualizing it wouldn't be proper because I do feel strongly that we're going to see lower claims activity in this fourth quarter. On a funding basis, you see all of your contributions here, active retiree and board contribution totaling $36 million. Net employer cost, $23,794. Budget loss ratio, 96.3 percent. And we're running at a surplus. Our funding is exceeding planned cost to date at $1,334. So we are comparing nine months to a full year. So if we turn to page two, we can look at it in a more accurate comparison because this is a per employee per month number. Participation wise, not much change there at all. Our participation averaged in 2015, 5,505 employees and retirees, 5,510, less than 1 percent. On a medical claims basis, our medical claims are up about 5.5 percent, excuse me, at $462 as compared to the prior year at $438. And remember, 2015, you actually had a dip or a decrease in your medical spend. The increase in medical spend, partially because we're looking at a period from January through September, but more importantly, we've had an increase in high cost claimants this year, over $100,000. Prescription drugs, we've talked about that in prior reporting, 11.7 percent. But remember, we just changed our prescription drug manager and looking to receive those savings and increase rebates. So we'll see that number come down at 11.7 percent increase. Our total claims figure, up 7.6 percent. Our plan reimbursements, much larger than before, up about 36 percent. Retiree drug subsidies, up 18.8. So we're looking at a net claims paid figure that's about 6.5 percent higher than previous year. But if you look across and compare it to that 2014 year, remember that you had a dip in cost in 2015. Our total Blue Cross plan cost, up about 6.2 percent. Retiree premiums last year's renewal, up 14.4, although there's not that huge number of participants there. So our total plan cost, once again, up 6.2 percent. Okay? Funding, up about 2 percent, 1.7 to be exact. Net employer cost, up around 8. On page three, one of the things that really strikes us when we look at this, you know, with what's going on in especially in the oil and gas industry up and down the I-49 corridor and especially in our area here, many school systems, because of the affordability of the coverage, because of the level of the benefit, have seen a huge migration of dependent participation in the plan. We're not seeing that. You have very small migration, although our single count is down about 1 percent. Our family count, up about 1 percent, very stable, not seeing a huge influx of dependent participation or increased membership into the plan, which is a good thing, but we're watching that very closely. Because you remember, when somebody is laid off or terminated, that's a qualifying event that they could come onto this plan if they're an eligible dependent with no pre-existing condition and full coverage from their date of eligibility. It even further exemplifies this on the next page, on page four. And you'll notice that membership has increased a half a percent as compared to the prior year. So we're not talking about any type of significant growth there. Your membership has not outpaced your employee or retiree participation growth. So very, very good thing. On page five, this is probably 180 degrees different from some of the other school systems. Our predominantly female employers that we represent whereabouts, I'm very used to saying that spouse, dependent spouse claims are much higher than that particular case's own employees. Not the case here. Your spousal claims are about 10 percent less than your employees over a five-year average and actually about 21 percent less currently. So that has not been an element to increase the cost of the plan. On your medical claims, once again, remember comparing nine months that include the summer months to previous years, with that increase of 5.5 percent coming from what I just mentioned and also from some larger high cost claiming activity. Just to give you an example, at this $462 figure, which is the average medical spend per employee per month, the medical spend for the month of October was $383 per employee per month. So we are moving significantly in the right direction. And I figured that we would see that type of favorable claims experience because as soon as the summer's over, October is usually a very favorable month. From a prescription drug standpoint, once again, we've moved to CVS Caremark effective 10-1. The projected savings on that move were approximately $3 million. So those numbers should show up. But the real reason for this 11 percent increase on prescription drugs are the high cost medications, increase in high cost medications, about 10 percent on your top medications by dollar amount, which I'll cover on another page here. Total claims, 7.6 percent. Total planned cost, 6.2. Your planned cost, on average, since 2012, 3.2 percent annually. That is really good, folks. You know, when you talk about trend over that period of time, trend is averaged 6 to 7 percent. So you're doing 50 percent of trend, which is very, very good for a group of your demographic and your industry. You'll see that the claims by benefit type, when we talked about your medical being up 5.5 percent, part of that because of the time period that we're measuring, the other part of that because of high cost claimants. It shows up in that 10.9 percent increase in inpatient hospitalization where your larger claimants will, claims are coming from. Circulatory disease was the number one diagnostic category for both inpatient and outpatient utilization. The efforts you're making in your wellness plan will bode well for that. Circulatory is on all of the school systems that we report on, is usually the number one diagnostic category. PPO savings, why Blue Cross has continued to be the viable choice here, is majority of that is because of their network at a 68.6 percent PPO savings, very good percentage there. Also, the reason that it's up a bit is because the highest discounts in your PPO network by provider are going to be on an inpatient basis. We had a higher utilization on an inpatient basis, so therefore it's reflected in that percentage. On page 12, 98.1 percent PPO utilization. That's fantastic. Probably some ex-teachers in here, 98.1's an A last time I checked. So we're doing well there. Prescription drugs, when I met earlier with Ms. Mona, I can tell you, this is the highest municipality generic utilization percentage I've reported this year. Okay? So pat on the back for good education, pat on the back for good cooperation from the membership. 86 percent compares to many other municipalities and school systems that are trying to get to 80 percent. So huge. Some of them are still in the 78, 79 percent range. So that is a function of a healthy group. That is also a function of a group that is practicing good consumerism, which comes from good education. Even though you're using the generics 86 percent of the time, if you turn the page, they only represent 30 percent of the total prescription drug claims. So it tells you how much that utilization is meaningful to your plan. But you can see, actually, we've gone up from 26 to 30. So that's a big jump as well. On page 15, when I told you that you had an 11 percent increase in your prescription drug utilization, it's not due to the fact that you are taking significantly more prescription drugs, it's because of several of the high cost specialty medications. As your membership ages and you get into the area of things like rheumatoid arthritis and all, these top two medications that you see down here in the 2016 January through September, Humira and Emeril are both to treat rheumatoid arthritis. They also treat things like Crohn's disease, as well as severe cases of psoriasis, things like that. But those two medications are thousands of dollars per month. And you do not take them until you've gone through all of the lower cost alternatives. If you've ever seen a commercial for either one of them, three quarters of the commercial is the side effects covered by those. So it's not something that you're wanting to go out and take, but they are very high cost. So if we calculate a per member per month number, or excuse me, per employee per month number, you'll see that in 2015, just on these 10 medications, we expended $41.10 per employee per month. That's increased to $45.27. So it's an increase of high cost medications. You also have a couple of cancer medications involved in here that are high cost as well. The move that we've recently made will also help out in that area with the discounts that we have on some of these specialty medications and the pre-authorizations around all of that. On a cost breakdown basis on page 16, I don't know of many cases that can say that they're operating for basically six cents on a dollar. So for every dollar of planned cost, what you're expending to administer your claims, to provide network, to provide reinsurance, all of the fixed cost of the plan is about six cents on a dollar. So where is the money going to? It's going to pay claims. On a fully insured basis, if you were not partially self-funded, that number would be significantly more. In many plans, you see that the retention or the fixed cost is in excess of 20 cents on a dollar. So you're really running your plan very efficiently. And then on page 17, you've probably heard before that the cost of the plan, from a claims perspective, usually it's about an 80/20 rule. That 20 percent of your membership drives about 80 percent of the cost of the plan. Not anything different here. You'll see that 17.5 percent of your planned members are responsible for about 78 percent of the claims. So the 80/20 plan rule is holding true here. Over 80 percent of your members have spent less than $5,000 in claims during this period. So it tells you, most of you folks are doing what? Using some copays or not even meeting the deductible based on what plan they're on and possibly some prescription drugs. So those copay structures can become important. So the only thing I'll tell you on that, sometimes when we're looking at benefit structure in a partially self-funded plan, if we raise the deductible, it might not have that bigger effect on the planned cost because you're only affecting a few people that actually need it. So if we know that 82 percent of your folks are not having high cost claims, then those are all of the things that we take into account when studying the benefits of the plan. So going forward here, your funding at present is sufficient to cover the cost of the plan. Looking at trend, looking at what we've done on the prescription drugs, it's always going to be our goal to continue to look at programs that, you know, that used to have the first two ways to cut costs or raise premiums and cut benefits. We want to look at other things. There are programs now that provide greater transparency. In your network, you have several choices to choose from, from doctors and hospitals and diagnostic healthcare providers. If we can make the difference in cost transparent to the member, then, and provide some type of benefit steerage towards a lower cost provider, that can help out a lot without having to change benefits and without having to increase the cost of the board share. So we're constantly looking at these types of programs. I know Blue Cross is currently in talks with some folks on that. So that's the kind of things that you're probably going to see coming down the pike in the future because we don't really shop that much healthcare because if they're in network, the benefit's the same wherever we go. But if we knew we could get an MRI over here for several hundred dollars less and we could be rewarded from a benefit perspective, then we'd probably go save that money, which will help the bottom line of the plan. So those are the types of things we look for in the future. Any questions?
Yes, sir.
So I'm looking at the final page, the claim distribution by dollar amount. It seems like we might have a real opportunity for the, what is that, eight and a half percent of our members that have claims of less than $2,000 this year to, at the very least, introduce them to the idea of the high deductible health plan. Because how much is our monthly premium? No, 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 for the full, because, well, let's start from the beginning, right? How many people participate in a high deductible health plan? Percentage wise? So that's, I don't know, 2 percent? No, 5 percent, right? Okay. So, and then, and that's $9 for an individual, right? And then how many, the bulk of this, I guess excluding retirees who are on the, with the Medicare Supplemental Plan, how many of our employees participate with the full, is it $300 a month that they pay for them and their family? For them, out of their pocket. That's what I'm talking about. Okay. Okay. So my point being that if we're going to have them paying $7,200 a year, I would wager that at least some of them have less than $2,000 in claims. And it would benefit them because then they would have access to the health reimbursement account that is triple tax advantage. It stays with them for the rest of their life and they could take that. Even if they just took the savings in the premium and put it right into the HRA, it makes no difference to their bottom line and they have this money rolling over for future catastrophic illnesses. The point being, is there any way that we can do a kind of education program? Because I've brought this up to several teachers who have talked to about this, and I get it, the fear of, well, what if this is the year, what if this is the year that my 14-year-old breaks his leg? And I get that, I do. But I think some hard numbers, especially if we're able to demonstrate to them, here is your, your medical history and your usage history of this plan, you could be $10,000 ahead right now instead of paying this premium every year, every year, every year, every year. So I would certainly like to see some kind of education on the high deductible plan with the HRA advantages, especially as concerned, because I know our share is less for a high deductible plan, right? So it saves them money, it sets them up better for the future, it saves us money, it allows us with that money in case we might be able to absorb any premium increases that may be coming. All this seems like a really good way for us to manage and demonstrate lower costs without impacting benefits. So can we do something like that?
Absolutely. There's been previous campaigns and I've seen some school systems, actually, the name of the campaign was "Do Your Homework." And to do the homework, because the premium savings happens every time you have a payroll cycle. And it's a given. And it's going to happen. And you might or might not have the claim, but if you fund the health reimbursement account properly, you're covered.
I would even go so far as to offer them, if we, I don't know if this is possible or anything, but offer them, instead of, if you switch over, we'll automatically set up your savings to go into the HRA, if they so chose. But at least give them that option to make sure that they at least have an easy way to make sure they're taking full advantage of what's available to them.
Absolutely.
It's a lot of work, but it's a lot of money in our employees' pockets. I mean, I'm on a high deductible health plan. I mean, I can't say, I can't say good enough things about it. I meet my deductible every year, but nonetheless.
But the whole time you're paying the lower premium?
Well, I meet my deductible every year, but I also deposit a substantial portion of my paycheck into the HRA and don't pay taxes on it and all this other stuff. So are my children.
Speaking of education, what about the wellness, the wellness component of your services? How is that, how is that working? And is that, how is that benefiting the bottom line that you presented tonight? We've heard a lot of doom and gloom over the past many years, but tonight seems to be fairly good news for our plan. How is the health and wellness portion, I don't know if Ms. Mona maybe wants to answer to that, but that's certainly one of the most important components to our plan. That's what drives the cost down.
That's always going to be part of the conversation because as we go through the reporting and we pinpoint where the claims are coming from, from a diagnostic standpoint, and you compare that with the reporting from the wellness side, it allows you, as time goes on and a wellness plan matures and your data is more mature, to instead of shoot with the shotgun approach in a wellness plan, to get more streamlined and to be able to use your wellness efforts to attack the cost.
Right. We negotiate with hospitals, we negotiate with prescription drug companies to try to cut deals for better costs. What are we doing to negotiate with the participants to be healthier?
You want to design your incentives to tackle what's costing the plan.
Right. Well, that's what I'm asking. What are we doing now, not what are we?
Well, the deductible credit was a substantial incentive for people to perform the different tasks in wellness, like, you know, doing the HS, I mean, the health, health assessment and also the biometric screening and then the other healthy activities. But we are looking at, this year in fact, we put on that employee portal some questions to identify prediabetic people. So that if they answer the quiz and they qualify, they'll be reached out to be in a special program that Blue Cross has to provide them education, recipes and all sorts of things like that. And so I think we're building on that little by little as they expand their wellness support.
This one's on. I don't mean to hog the space either.
So for example, if we saw that diabetes claims were on the rise and we saw that our metrics from the wellness reporting showed a decline in complacency for diabetes, you design your benefits around incentivizing those diabetics to be compliant. Because the difference in cost between a compliant diabetic and an uncompliant diabetic is thousands of dollars a year.
Right. For example, we probably can't do much about Vivance, but there's probably quite a bit we could do about the Crestor, you know? And so we do that several ways. We negotiate with the company, but we also need to negotiate with the folks who are a famous thing, eating the Boudin and Cracklins every day, right? So that's the important thing that I think. I don't think it's missing. We have health and wellness, but I don't think we're taking advantage of it to its maximum benefit. And to me, that's the missing piece. So whatever we can do as a committee, as a group, I'm on the plan, whatever I can do, that's the kind of stuff I want to.
The Boudin and Cracklins are good, but they're crucial because when I told you circulatory is number one, school system is number two, muscular skeleton. On your feet all day and we're not fit, it's always.
Mr. Hidalgo, I'd say you're doing your part, sir.
I have, but prior to last year, I have not.
Were you on it before then?
No, but I was heading that direction. I would be on it today. I would be on it today. Thank you. Any other questions? Yes, ma'am. If you could, we need to get you on a microphone, so do we, you want us to bring one to you or do you want to come up? I gave her the choice, Mr. Santani.
I don't know if this is the, I don't know if this is the right time to ask this question, but I'm going to ask it, okay?
We'll find out.
My daughter's a nurse at one of the hospitals, and about a few years ago, five or six years ago, they said, oh, you can smoke and you can be fat, but you're going to pay higher premiums in two years. And they gave, they put them through a stop-smoking, and she had to stop smoking because she's a single parent and she doesn't get child support. So, they, I mean, I was praying for her to stop smoking, this was the answer to my prayer, but she doesn't smoke, and every year, they test her, and if you say you're not smoking, you continue with the lower premiums, but if you lie, then you get, you're fired immediately. I mean, if you say you're not smoking, and, because they can blood test, and you're smoking, so some, you know, you buy, so some of the, some of her friends are praying, are paying higher premiums because they've chosen to smoke a little, you know, they, they're trying not to, but they just want to smoke, so they can pay higher premiums. Do we have that here with Lafayette parents or not? Okay, I was just wondering.
Unfortunately, not.
Something to, I mean, I've never smoked. I'm a non-smoker, and I pay the same premiums as people who. I'm a non-smoker, I've never smoked, and I'm paying the same premiums as, you know, people that I know smoke.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see how that's even legal to do. I mean, now males on, if you go on the exchange and buy a health insurance plan, you're paying maternity premium, so, even though you're a male. So, I, I don't think that's allowed.
That, it is allowed with very, there's some restrictions in the Affordable Care Act of how much you can do, but in, in different wellness scenarios, smoking is one of the things they test for. It's hard to increase somebody's premium because if you smoke, but yet you agree to a smoking cessation program, you can still continue to smoke two packs a day if you're willing to, to listen to a counselor once a week for 15 minutes and you, you know, and you're just, you won't get charged a higher premium. They may, they, they allow you to do it, but they make it so restrictive with the Affordable Care Act that it's so easy to get away from paying the higher premium and continuing to smoke. And then, the cost of the testing is very, very expensive. So, some groups have, have adopted it. It hasn't been the magic bullet that folks thought it would be to curtail the amount of smokers in the group.
Yes, ma'am.
Only going to say this because I'm a health and PE teacher. Our school, for a while, it started where they had like a little exercise program twice a week after school, and some of the teachers really started taking advantage of it. And then, I know for a while, we tried, the parish was going to try to have it set up where they could send somebody to the different schools so that the teachers could work out because of, just like the rest of us, I'm going to say, 12 hours a day, it seems to be a normal workday, and if you could just find a way to squeeze in that 30 minutes, you're already at school, and you could just zip away, exercise, and get back to your paperwork, we would get more people exercising, and I think our heart, our cardio, that type of stuff would improve, probably your diabetes, the overweight. And in the last two years, I, I don't know what happened, but it just kind of, everybody got so overwhelmed that nobody has time to teach the classes, and everybody would, lots of teachers would like it, like if they had like twice a week a little 30-minute exercise program, but if there was some way that we could figure out how to do that.
Just put a margarita machine in.
Well, you'd have to pay for the margaritas too.
Well, there you go.
Okay.
Black coffee machine, whatever.
Just a thought, I'm out.
Thank you.
I just wanted to mention that we have gone to different schools and promoted the Smoking Cessation Trust. I don't know if you're aware of that, but when the state settled with Big Tobacco, they were allowed to put aside some money, and that money was to be, deliver health services to smokers of Louisiana who have been, live here and have been smoking since a certain date, which I want to say is '82 or something like that. So, I personally participated in the program, which paid for me to see a cardiologist, paid for all the medication and all the counseling that I needed to quit. And so, we've been going around to schools and sharing that. It's completely free for the Louisiana resident, and, and that's, it's been a, a big impact on my life, and I enjoy sharing that with people. So, just so you know, there is an effort to win them over. Thank you.
I know we've all been hearing on the news about Obamacare and how it's going up, the premiums are going up in a lot of places. I just want to ask our consultant whether that's going to have any effect on the insurance industry, you know, with premiums, and we'll be looking at problems coming up with that. Of course, I'm sure it depends who becomes president, and, but it's, it's a big question for a lot of people because we don't know what's going to happen. And then, I just want to make one statement. The retired teachers had a state convention here, and they gave out certificates to 14 people who are 100 years old this year, 14 teachers.
How many in March?
None were from Lafayette, but you have one that's going to get one next year.
Just to, to answer that, the fact that you are a self-funded or partially self-funded plan, you're, you are not pooled with other employers or other individuals, the market, the, part of the market that you're hearing on the news is the coverages that are, individuals are purchasing on the exchange and in the individual market. What's happened to the individual market is you now, through the Affordable Care Act, have no such thing as pre-existing condition limitations anymore. Guaranteed issue, no underwriting, so it doesn't matter what your health history is, you can have that. So, when all of this took place, you did not have the young, healthy people purchasing coverage, you had the people that were going to utilize the coverage and make claims purchasing because the, the penalties for not having healthcare coverage were so inexpensive, $95, that they started out with when it originally started. It was much less costly to pay the penalty, even if you filed an income tax return, than it was to pay the premium. So, that's your problem. You have several carriers that have opted out of the exchanges, you have several carriers that are going up on their individual premiums from 30 to, in some states, more than 100%. That is not the same type of plan or coverage as you have here. So, you don't have that adverse selection going on in your group. So, as long as you remain in that partially self-funded arena or any type of plan that the cost of your plan is directly related to your claims, you'll be okay.
All right. Any other questions? Yes, yes.
I'd just like, for our next meeting like this, if, Mr. Fontaine, if you guys could have some kind of idea on an education plan for our high-deductible option, that, that complies, because I agree with Mr. Mouton, that you're going to have to demonstrate, here's how much money you personally could have in your pocket if you had made this choice last year instead of the other choice. But I know doing something like that while, technology-wise, probably not that difficult. I want to make sure that we don't run into HIPAA violations or, or anything like that. So, if we could just have, I mean, a little bit past a brainstorm, but just some options on how we can move forward with the education plan on something that saves everybody money. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you very much for coming down, Mr. Fontaine, giving us the report. If there are no further questions or comments, we'll declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.